Father God in heaven, we are grateful for your graciousness, your kindness, your provision towards us. You have placed these elected officials as stewards over the resources of the state, and we pray that they're ever mindful of your will and your ways as they make their decisions today. Bless them and use them in the name of your son Jesus. Amen.
Would you just say...
Do I mean the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Johnson.
Here.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Martin.
Getting here.
Getting here. Councilor Kat.
Here.
Councilor William.
Here.
Councilor Taylor.
Here.
Councilor Harris.
Here.
Councilor McLendon.
Present.
Councilor Monday.
Here.
Councilor Holt.
Here.
Councilor Crewn.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilor Robinson.
Present.
A full house, 10 out of 10.
For our president, we will proceed with the meeting, and first item would be bid openings. You have some bids on community development regarding replacement of roofs. If you have analyzed this, could I have a motion and a second to refer it to community development?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they'll be referred to community development. We have a proclamation on fair housing, and Paul, this was under your area.
Yes, sir.
And I believe you delegated it.
I've delegated it to Donnie Blair.
Tell him to come on forward and...
This is the proclamation to the city of West Memphis, whereas April 18th marks the 50th anniversary of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act in 1968. This landmark legislation was amended in 1988 by the Fair Housing Amendment Act, which expanded the coverage of Title VIII of the 1968 Act. Title VIII of the 1968 and the 1988 Acts generally refer to the Federal Fair Housing Act, made it a nation policy to assure that the fair housing becomes a reality throughout the United States by proclaiming discrimination of the sale, rental, financial, housing as based on race and color, religion, sex, handicap, family status in June 19... June 2018, as a time of rededication to the spirit of the purpose of the national goal of fair housing for all of the renewal and the commitment as a citizen to make the promise of fair housing a reality of all Americans. Whereas as a nation, we have come a long way through the 50 years in meeting the national commitment, whereas it comes a responsibility of every American to make their personal commitment to ensure that all persons are afforded the equal opportunity in obligated housing, whereas I am deeply committed to the goal of fair housing and equal opportunity of all Americans. Further, I am firm convinced that the overwhelming majority of all Americans are familiar committed accordingly to join together, translate our community in a clear living reality of confirm of individual commitment and ensure that fair housing practice and equal opportunities in housing does exist in all of our neighborhoods across the great land. Therefore, I, William H. Johnson, mayor, do hereby proclaim the month of June of 2018 to be Fair Housing Month. The individuals that are following citizens to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies and activities.
Thank you. Paul?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to pass this on to you. Donnie, this is affectionately referred to as the tongue twister.
You got that right.
It is the worst, hardest proclamation we have to read.
He did. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for support. And, Donnie, good job.
Paul, could you turn that around? Hold on. Let me get this. One more. Thank you.
I'd like to ask a question. How many folks in here were born in a house or raised in a house that didn't have any facilities in it? There's just very few of us. Those were the times when you could see cracks in the walls in the fair housing park, came along, and there was a lot more homes being built at that time, and I was a part of that. Always wanted to be a carpenter and home builder, and then I went on to be greater, do greater things, got involved with the city, and worked with the city through the rehab program, and it's really been good and fun and helped a lot of people that need housing. Thank you.
Been a good program. You have a copy of the minutes in your packet, any corrections?
Motion to approve is admitted.
Second. Motion second to approve, all in favor by aye. Opposed, they are approved. Under item, under old business, we have a second reading on an ordinance on fees and license.
An ordinance to levy an annual privilege license upon all persons, partnerships, associations, firms, and corporations engaged in carrying on or following certain trades, businesses, professions, vocations, and/or callings within the corporate limits of the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, to provide the time for payment of such privileged license, to provide penalties for non-payment thereof.
Mr. William, was this the one you wanted to read out?
I'm making a motion, put it on first.
To have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and place it on its third reading.
Will move.
And a second, I heard it. All in favor by aye. Opposed, would you read it for the third and the final time?
An ordinance to levy an annual privilege license upon all persons, partnerships, associations, firms, and corporations engaged in carrying on or following certain trades, businesses, professions, vocations, and/or callings within the corporate limits of the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, to provide the time for payment of such privileged license, to provide penalties for non-payment thereof.
That concludes the third and the final reading. Could I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance?
Will move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, would you explain this and explain when it takes effect?
I can tell you when it takes effect. It's going to be January 1 of 2019. As far as explaining it, it changes some fees that are paid to the clerk's office typically and provides for other established fees.
So the six-month period, anybody can express their opinions before it goes into effect?
Aye.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor by aye. Opposed, it's carried. Would you give it a number, Mr. Clerk?
It'll be ordinance number 2472.
That concludes item of old business we brought forward, and we have a resolution in...
Mayor, the new business, we're going to read R. 1, 01, 02, and 03 by title on.
Seven.
Have a motion and second to read title on it, the listed items. All in favor by aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, thank you.
I do.
Read R. 1.
A resolution to change the West Memphis Comprehensive Plan for the area located east of AR-147 Highway, north of Interstate 40, and south of AR-218 Highway from residential, commercial, and conservation to industrial.
That concludes the first reading and the only reading on a resolution. Do I have a motion and a second to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by aye. Opposed, it's carried. Would you give that resolution a number?
It'll be resolution number 2168.
Moving on to 01, would you read the title to 01?
An ordinance to rezone a 609.92 acre tract of land in the city of West Memphis located at approximately 1351 through 1983 North Airport Road from I-1 Limited Industrial District to PUD Planned Unit Development with industrial uses.
We, I believe we were in agreement, we read it only the first time today?
Yes.
So moving on, would you read the title to 02?
An ordinance to amend the West Memphis zoning map and zoning ordinance 1988 as amended. Article 2, Section 1, zoning districts established, adding 1-1-M Limited Industrial Manufacturing District. Article 3, Section 3, industrial districts. Paragraph A, general description, adding number 1B, 1-1-M Limited Industrial Manufacturing. Paragraph B, permitted uses, and paragraph C, lot, yard, and height regulations.
That concludes the first reading. We'll have it on our next regular scheduled meeting for a second, and possibly a third. Would you read the title to 03?
An ordinance to rezone certain property in the city of West Memphis located east of AR-147 Highway, north of Interstate 40, and south of AR-218 Highway from R-1 Single Family District, C-2 Open Display Commercial District, and CV Conservation District to I-1-M Limited Industrial Manufacturing.
That concludes the first reading. We'll have it on our next regular scheduled meeting. Moving on to the next page, the first item would be permission request, and I need permission to refer the bids that we had in front of us from, to the West Memphis Utility Commission for disposition.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by aye. Opposed, they'll be referred to the utility commission. Next item is to sign, for me to sign a contract. We had an extended discussion on it in pre-council. Are they going to have a motion and a second to allow me to sign it? Any other discussion? All in favor by aye. Opposed? I'll sign the contract. He's making a note on it. I need permission to sign the MPO contract with Mr. Brawley that was discussed in pre-council. Could I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by aye. Opposed? I will sign them. Oh. I need permission to sign two interns that we discussed in pre-council. Could I have a motion and a second?
Some move.
Any discussion? All in favor by aye. Opposed, it's carried. Would you give that resolution a number?
It'll be resolution number 2168.
Moving on to 01, would you read the title to 01?
An ordinance to rezone a 609.92 acre tract of land in the city of West Memphis located at approximately 1351 through 1983 North Airport Road from I-1 Limited Industrial District to PUD Planned Unit Development with industrial uses.
We, I believe we were in agreement, we read it only the first time today?
Yes.
So moving on, would you read the title to 02?
An ordinance to amend the West Memphis zoning map and zoning ordinance 1988 as amended. Article 2, Section 1, zoning districts established, adding 1-1-M Limited Industrial Manufacturing District. Article 3, Section 3, industrial districts. Paragraph A, general description, adding number 1B, 1-1-M Limited Industrial Manufacturing. Paragraph B, permitted uses, and paragraph C, lot, yard, and height regulations.
That concludes the first reading. We'll have it on our next regular scheduled meeting for a second, and possibly a third. Would you read the title to 03?
An ordinance to rezone certain property in the city of West Memphis located east of AR-147 Highway, north of Interstate 40, and south of AR-218 Highway from R-1 Single Family District, C-2 Open Display Commercial District, and CV Conservation District to I-1-M Limited Industrial Manufacturing.
That concludes the first reading. We'll have it on our next regular scheduled meeting. Moving on to the next page, the first item would be permission request, and I need permission to refer the bids that we had in front of us from, to the West Memphis Utility Commission for disposition.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by aye. Opposed, they'll be referred to the utility commission. Next item is to sign, for me to sign a contract. We had an extended discussion on it in pre-council. Are they going to have a motion and a second to allow me to sign it? Any other discussion? All in favor by aye. Opposed? I'll sign the contract. He's making a note on it. I need permission to sign the MPO contract with Mr. Brawley that was discussed in pre-council. Could I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by aye. Opposed? I will sign them. Oh. I need permission to sign two interns that we discussed in pre-council. Could I have a motion and a second?
Some move.
Any discussion? All in favor by aye. Opposed? I will employ them. Planning Commission recommendation in your packet, could I have a motion and a second to accept the Planning Commission recommendation?
Some move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor by aye. Opposed? We will accept their recommendation. Committee reports, I'll start, I'll start at my far right, Willis. Alderman Monday?
No. The utility commission met on May the 10th, and I didn't have the report ready the last meeting, so I brought it with me today. It was reported that there were no injuries or accidents for the month of April. There were zero resignations and two new employees added, and currently the utility commission has 15 openings for employment. Went over the first quarter financials, approved the correctional action plan that was submitted to ADEQ, asked to hire F and A to perform a WWTH hydraulic capacity assessment, and then also to hire RJN to perform a system-wide flow monitoring. And the last item that we discussed was partnering with the Rotary of West Memphis on a golf tournament.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
You said that the utility department has openings for 15 positions. Can you tell me where those?
I can't, but I'm sure Todd can.
He's not here today, is he?
Todd or...
He's on vacation.
Janice might be able to tell you.
Is she in here?
She's not here. She was here earlier, but I guess she's gone.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of openings.
Do what?
I just said, that's a lot of positions there, 15.
Yeah, but that's what was discussed. That was, now that was four weeks ago that we discussed it.
Most of them in water, wastewater.
Water and wastewater.
But 15 positions, you're right, Councilman Robertson, that's a lot of positions open.
Is it because, Mr. Martin, you may be able to speak to that just a little bit, is it because no one is qualified or just not? Now, what are the qualifications for those?
They require, of course, a CDL, but also some certification that you have to get.
Well, the water department employee that's licensed, it gets to be a problem.
Water license.
So how's...
Test involved, and it keeps them, haven't been able to pass the test.
But there's not 15 places in that, so I'm not sure.
Well, there's 14 now, because they introduced one today.
They introduced one today? Right, the young lady?
The engineer.
So there's 14 now.
The question I have now is, how is that affecting city business with that many? It's not affecting anything at all, so this is not a job that's like extremely, I mean, all jobs are important, but it's not hurting anything.
They're doing their duty, but they're working.
They just got everybody strung up.
Yeah. I will, I'll get you a breakdown, Ms. Robinson, and I'll send it to you here this week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lorraine, you have a report?
I don't have one, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, did I skip?
Personnel committee.
I'm sorry about that.
That's okay, we can...
Go ahead.
Personnel committee met on yesterday, June 6th, and pretty much the items discussed were follow-up items that will require ongoing conversations. We are talking in length about the residency requirement that the city currently has. We're looking at vacation and sick time, as well as other strategies that we're wanting to perhaps become more involved with in terms of trying to, strategies of retaining, recruiting, these are the things that we're looking at, the personnel committee, just briefly. There will be a recruiting event at the Arkansas Workforce Center for the sanitation department, which will be held June the 11th from 1:30 to 3:30, and that will be at 2003 West Broadway Street, right here in West Memphis. And we are looking to recruit Class B CDL drivers, so I don't know if that may have something to do with one of the issues that you were talking about in terms of requirements, but there will be a recruitment event held, again, that's June the 11th from 1:30 to 3:30. Other items that we're discussing, we will talk with council. We want to get a more in-depth look on what we're trying to do, and then we'll bring it to council, and I'll report that at the next meeting. So that pretty much wraps up my report.
Can you, can you explain the residential?
The residency requirement, currently, we have a requirement that if you employ with us, with the city, that you must live here. What we're looking at, and what we've currently done, is talk with some of the managers, the department heads, some of the individuals. The biggest problem there we're having with the residency requirement is, is the main problem is that it's difficult to recruit people that are qualified within this area. And we can't always find candidates who meet the criteria and some of the things that we're asking. It does kind of put, and we're competing with Memphis, a lot of particular jobs that we have that can go to Memphis probably to make more. So the reason why we're looking at the requirement is kind of one of those things that's kind of standing in our way from us gaining the qualified employee, employees and applicants that we're needing. So again, like I said, that's the ongoing conversation as far as what we're going to do, we're going to bring it to council, do we want to do away with it? Just having conversations, but nothing concrete just yet is the reason why we do not bring brought that to the council.
Do we have employees that are currently not living in the city already?
Now, that would be something I would like for Janice to, to follow up with you with, and she can kind of give you more detailed information as far as who is. I, to be honest with you, Councilor Crewn, I don't know, we've talked about it. Councilor Taylor, is there, do you know?
I think the requirement is they have to live in the county, unless there's an exception in their...
Right. And they're having, I didn't really want...
Based on the department's needs.
Right, right.
Is that for a department head and everybody, or just for employees? I didn't hear you say...
I'm sorry.
All, all employees, they have 90 days, once employed by the city, to move to Creighton County. They can't come to the council and get, and y'all can grant them exceptions. That's in the, as it stands right now.
Right. And that's kind of what we're trying to look at, maybe revising or completely doing away with it. Like I said, it's more just, it's more detailed than just kind of...
And the issue we have is, we, that we're running into with hiring employees, getting qualified people, is they have to accept and then after the fact...
Move within.
Come here to get permission not to live here for, in Creighton County. They may live in Memphis.
I understand.
I think they may live closer than you do in, in Terrell or than Gilmore, but, but, that's the process. So we're trying to, the personnel committee and Janice have been working hard trying to find a quicker and easier way so that when they do offer an employer position, they can tell them if they, it's up to them.
Well, I mean, in my personal opinion, and this is my, just my own personal opinion, if you don't live in the city, it's hard to have ownership of what's going on in the city. But that's just my own opinion. I know. Well, you talk to a city boy here, but you probably got 60, 65 percent of people don't live in the city. So, so other than that... Might help our population. Maybe one of the few things, when you and I agree on, but we do agree on that one.
And I mean, I have, there's more information, Councilor Crewn.
No, no.
We're looking demographic at amount of information that's kind of more than just giving it in a report. I didn't want to go into full detail.
Well, I think if you all see Cindy after this is over, she can get that ordinance that we have, resolution, have we done it? We done it.
Okay.
Yeah, you can go ahead and give it to her. Well, it's in the manual. What I'm, but I'm just saying, and we'd be glad to get a copy, but now, they have 90 days according to the, as it stands, to either move to Creighton County or come to the council to get permission not to. That, that's in the ordinance. But I'm just saying, because you know, we got HR, personally handled with HR. I mean, I was just saying, if they wanted the ordinance, they could get it. See, that's all I was saying.
You know, we've got some employees that have been with the city two or three times.
Yeah. Well, and I think that's something that obviously the council needs to discuss.
Yeah.
And the information that more of our notes, I'd be glad to give you a copy of that. It goes more into the demographics, the contradicting population, the, the changing times and the reasons why, you know, things that we are looking at that affect us with that, with the requirement. I'll give that to you so you can read it. It's your own leisure. Yes, sir. That's it for me.
That completes.
That completes.
All right. Move on. Next to your next door neighbor there, Lorraine, you have anything?
I really, I really don't, I'm so sorry. I didn't get, get anything this time.
No, sorry, not this time.
Your honor?
Advertising and Promotion Committee, Commission met on May the 17th. We heard the report on the rollout of the Explore Bike Share Program, so there are two bike rental stations, one at the trailhead across from Poncho's at Martin Luther King at Broadway. There's another one at the base of the bridge on the Arkansas side, so you can rent a bicycle to enjoy the Delta Regional River Park or the Harahan Bridge Project. We heard a report to that, the Metropolitan Planning Organization made a request of the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Department to put exit signs on Interstate 40 and 55 directing people how to get to the Delta Regional River Park and the Big River Crossing. We had events at the auditorium for the current month, there were 10 events with 6,539 visitors for that event. For the Civic Center for April, there were four events with 341 visitors. The tax for April was the most recent that we received, it was $136,649, and that's up approximately 1% over the previous year. I'll go ahead and do Public Works. Public Works met, we received the recycling report of 13,760 pounds, no e-waste, the South Loop Pickering is still working on the design. The Hino Bridge Project, the beams, the support beams are being poured. There's still no time or dates for closure of the Hino Bridge. The Lear Street Bridge is under environment and design, design at the RDOT. And the, on code enforcement, the, with, police have done another sweep for junk cars, and they have a 65% compliance. We're really pleased with that. Thank you for the paper, and then for the city's social media campaign to help people be in compliance. I'll turn it over to Ms. Robinson for Keep West Memphis Beautiful, and then I was going to ask our city engineer to come up and give us an update on where we stand on the trash issues, because I know people have concerns about that. So, Ms. Robinson, and...
Thank you so very much. I'm up now, mayor, is that okay? Right, we have scheduled, rescheduled Keep West Memphis Beautiful Cleanup Bliss for Saturday, June 23rd. I would like to say that the date that we had planned for it, we, I bear it, my dear sweet brother, on that day. Thank you all for all your prayers, your concerns, and your wonderful thoughts, I appreciate that, and make me feel so wonderful, and those of you who attended. So we've rescheduled the Keep West Memphis Beautiful Cleanup Bliss for June, Saturday, June 23rd, and we're asking everybody to participate. We're already beginning to get advertisements out, trying to talk it up, recruiting volunteers. If there's anyone in here who would like to volunteer, you have a committee, some kind of a group or church group you'd like to volunteer to help us clean up on this Saturday. This will be our seventh annual, and it's just growing and getting bigger and getting better every year. And of course, we're talking about recruiting people to come into our city to live, to work here. We most certainly want them to come to a clean, safe environment to bring their families to work, to go to school, and to go to their churches, synagogues, or mosques, or wherever it is you may choose to worship. So Saturday, June 23rd, mark your calendar, it'll be on my Facebook page. Nick is already helping me get the word out through the communications department, so just get ready to work, get your hands dirty, sweat, smell bad. And refreshments after it's over.
Ms. Hicks?
That's it for me.
As you all know, we are having an issue with the trash pickup, the curbside trash. We have had some personnel issues within the sanitation department, and we are actually looking to recruit two to three more drivers, that's the Class B CDL you were speaking of. We are trying to get the word out through social media, things of that nature, but to, you know, to put things on a platform, you know, if you have to go residential garbage, dumpster service, or roadside trash, we're going to make sure we pick up that, you know, residential garbage and the dumpsters first. And then, of course, anything else left behind, we're coming back slow around on the curbside trash. So I apologize for the delay. The good news is, within the next couple of weeks, we plan on using a digital service that we're going to have a six-month pilot program on, and what this will do will help us keep track of all the trucks, where they are at any time. Any of the council members, anybody who would like access to this, you know, account, it's a website, and it'll have a GPS inside the vehicle, and the drivers will be able to relay messages back and forth across this website. So it's slowly in the works, we're getting all the kinks worked out on that, but hopefully that'll be able to roll out soon, and we can identify, you know, when people have concerns of when exactly it's going to be picked up, we can tell them now, instead of them just waiting and putting things out and waiting on us. Go ahead. Currently, today, we have three, this morning we had two, we had an assistant manager that jumped on the truck, the trash truck, I mean, he's a little slow going, he's not used to it, but we caught up with him, and he's doing a good job.
So right now, as today, this afternoon, we have three out of five.
So all the back of the room?
There are five total trash trucks, we have three running today, we actually, like, that's part of the drivers that we need, you know. If we have anybody, another driver miss off a garbage route or dumpster route, a lot of times we'll have to pull somebody off that trash truck to go on for one of those, because that's when you've got to prioritize, you know, I don't want the city to become infested with anything by any means, or, but, you know.
I like that, make that, yeah, I add to that statement, Mark, she says she's running three, which she is, and the, the other two, the drivers are not here, one of them tore a rotator cuff and had surgery this past week. And one of them stepped on the nail and it went through his shoe and into his foot, so those are unavoidable situations, and the other two that are sitting up, it's not that the drivers didn't come to work, which they didn't, but they weren't able to.
Right, and a lot of that's workers' comp and things of that nature, and of course, we handle that in the proper way. And so we're kind of, you know, I'm not asking for leniency by any means, this, we should have crossed trains, I, I see the errors in our ways now, but, you know.
Don't want to put you on the hot seat.
Okay.
Okay, but you can only put so much, so many, invest so much in one department. Now, we gave three percent across the board raise in January.
Correct.
Five percent across the board for that department.
Sanitation, we do have a driver, I apologize, I'll let this out, sanitation has driver, I mean, so our streets have a driver.
Well, we gave a five percent, that's eight percent.
Right.
Okay, we're remodeling the break room and the restrooms, which look great, okay. Now I've heard we decided to pay a hundred percent on the uniform costs, so that's going to take money, put money back in your pocket. The GPS, why now are we deciding to do the GPS, because that technology's been out long.
It has, it has been out for a while, but a lot of the things that we've been offered in the past has not met up to the credentials of this company, a lot of it's been artified tags, basically where the tag has to meet a bend to be certified, where is this program actually takes the movements of the vehicle and analyzes it to see captures in real time exactly what they're doing. So instead of them just tagging at each location, within two weeks, we will know our driver's habits, our driver's routes, things of that nature, it goes more in depth into data than just a tagging of a, of a magnetic card, basically.
Well, it also, you know, I spent forty-five years in private sector work.
Right.
And managing a manufacturer, and doing a different job now, but, but it seems to me that the leadership at the level of that facility needs to be reevaluated. It needs to be looked at, because the direction that, that, that department's going, I know you're doing a lot of good stuff.
Correct.
And I know you are, I've seen, I've seen the results of your, of your decision making, but that, that leadership of that department needs to be looked at.
Right.
I agree.
Frank?
I'm, I'm, no, I'm-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm not putting you on the hot seat, but, no, I see you.
I'm not there, I'm just saying.
You know, um, me and Ms. Robinson drove all over West Memphis a few days back, and we looked at everything from Ward one to Ward five.
Correct.
And it's, it's, it's difficult, it's a mess. But, uh, the guys are not working Saturdays, and I was told, you've been told, the landfill wasn't open on Saturdays, but the landfill is open half-day on Saturday. We need to get the city cleaned up. I, we drove around and there's stuff everywhere, I mean, grass is rolled up in the trash.
Correct.
It's bad.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you know, the supervisors have CDLs, if they need to drive a truck, they need to drive a truck to pick up the trash in the city, the city needs to be cleaned up.
Yes, sir.
Period.
Yes, sir. We had a, the assistant manager down there today, he does have a CDL, the other supervisor does not have a CDL, so, and the, we called, the Sand Hex has now since taken over the Critney County landfill to a private organization, and one time the Critney County landfill was open Saturday, and it's still on our website that they're open on Saturday. They, we called and asked, the young lady who answered the phone, said they were not open on Saturday.
I'll, I'll verify that, because I've been working in the trash business.
They, they, they're not open on Saturday.
On the website.
Unless there's a special request.
Okay.
There has to be a special request.
Well, now that, because on the website it does say that.
You can make a special request.
Yeah, and we, that could happen, that could happen, she didn't fill in that little panel.
All right, one more thing, and I'm all, I'm all set down.
Okay.
Nick Coates is not in the room, but I was going to ask Nick why he hasn't communicated this trash issue to the public, because I know that the council people have gotten calls, but I definitely have been getting a lot of calls about the trash.
He, he has, honestly, the, the honest answer, he has been within billions of meetings, he's actually taken phone calls for me and answered things on the website that people have been asking about the trash and unrelated issues, and he's contacted these people back. I can't answer for him, but I know he has been helping me in any needs that I have.
Well, I know that, I think if he communicated with the public on this, it wouldn't be so difficult.
Right, and our goal with this new technology is actually to be able to contact, you know, people, you know, because they won't have access to this website. Nick should have access and every morning he should give updates, and we've already discussed that, but, so we're kind of working, co-working together, but until this new technology gets put into place, basically I call the city shop, because I don't, I don't make their routes anymore, and I don't direct them where to go, that's their supervisors.
I'll be honest with you, I mean, I've been on the city shop a few times and I don't think they, they know what management and leadership is down there, and then after you come in and start doing some things, it's gotten, you know, toughened.
I'm going to say, Madam, Madam's benefits, she's done an excellent job.
She's done a great job.
What I asked her to do, I asked her to get to overtime to a minimum or, or out, which she's done, I asked her to get the people to work at full eight hours a day instead of working four and getting paid for eight, and I think she's done exactly what I asked her to do.
I'll, I'll, I'll agree with you later, I think she's done a great job.
I want to support what she's doing, and it's, it's showing signs, we've made some changes in personnel, quietly, and it'll get straightened out.
Change there, it's going to be.
Change needs to come. Change is good.
Do they have any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
That completes my part.
Is that all of the committee commission report?
Yes.
Cabinet Department have a couple of citizens request, let me get my sheet here. Mr. Hubbard, are you here?
My name is Alondo Hubbard, my address is five twelve, twelve, South Seventh Street. I am here for, speaking on behalf of Economic Development in the city. I've been here all my life, I've been a resident all my life, and I'm aware of the Economic Development Plan that the Department of Treasury ran at the, the county, and I just kind of went around and just kind of got a few suggestions from the people in the city just to see what they would, they feel would enhance or help the city. I, I've rode up and down Missouri Broadway and I see a lot of the buildings there are kind of old and just not being used, and I think, I think, I see those things and I see so much opportunity that could be done with those buildings, and I, it's, it's kind of a, a, an issue or a thought process of mine of like what exactly is being done with those buildings and what exactly is being done for as far as businesses and opportunities that can be, that possibly can be there. I've heard that people would like to see more shopping centers and movie theaters or healthier food choices when, when it comes to our restaurants and things like that. And this is not only for just like entertaining purposes, but I feel like this was also, this would also be good as far as unemployment and creating jobs for people who don't have it, or, or seeking that opportunity, which is another issue, I, I, I've heard people say, well, a lot of youth, they say they don't have a lot of opportunities coming home from school, a lot of, a lot of them go off to college and come back to school, but they really can't find a job, they don't have the programs that promote opportunity for them to be able to come back and, and work, or, you know, just have different things to do. So I, I, I think another suggestion would be just like an incentive program for the youth, or summer programs for youth that are not, not just those who come back from college, but those who are out of school, on summer break and things like that, just to kind of give them something to do. I mean, we have our boys club, the, you know, boys club, but I think those, those, those facilities are kind of behind or kind of, they're not attractive to, to the youth. So if we could find a way to build on top of that and, and give them opportunity to, to come in and, you know, just be proud of where they're from and proud of being in the city with you. Also, as far as education, I'm big on reading and everything, if, if we could put money into the library, library, to have a more updated library, I just was at the library yesterday, it's, it's, it's a lot of dated information there, and information is powerful, not available, and I feel like if you could give the people something to, or create a, an institution where they, they have an opportunity to, to really learn and enjoy learning, that would, that would be great. Psychologists, psychologists, another thing that I heard from a lot of the teachers, because they say how, or, or better, or more counselors, because they say how, how some of the students have a lot of behavior problems, a lot of behavior problems that, of course, they start at home, but once they're in society or in the public, it's an issue. So just certain things like that and different things like that, that I, I would like to see, and not only me, but like I said, I've been around the city and talked to a lot of people, a lot of people will feel like that's, that's something that they would like to see as well.
Let me, let me just ask you one quick question.
Yes, sir.
A lot of things you're saying is good, a lot of things you talk about, we're working on them, or have tried to work on them.
Yes, sir.
At the same time, I mean, have you ever come to the council meeting or anything like that to see what's going on, or either in the other meeting that we have subcommittee, to see what's going on? You have?
Yes, sir.
Some, maybe, few, if not.
Yes, sir.
Because I serve on most of, but anyway, what I'm getting at, you know, a lot of times it's easy to come up and talk about what we need, what's not happening, but you really got to figure out why these things are not happening, you know, first of all, it takes money, or when you start talking about taxes, nobody want to hear anything about taxes.
Right.
Okay, so a lot of these things are not happening because that's one of the reasons.
Right.
Okay, now, fourth, the empty buildings, I mean, we have Economic Development that constantly working on trying to bring different things, different entities into our city. And, and like I say, my, I would suggest to you, I mean, if you're really sincere and trying to figure out what's going on, if you attend more to public meetings, because that's the only way you're going to be able to understand what's going on, I mean, you could read papers, things like that, but at the same time, West Memphis got a lot of good things going on, whether you see it or not, I'm here to tell you. And, and, and the reason you don't know is because, number one, you haven't went to the right location or whatever, come down, sit down, talk to the mayor or any of the other elected officials to figure out what's going on. See, it's easy for the public to sit down and say, you know, we're not doing anything.
Right.
But our job is bigger than what you think.
Right.
So I just want to leave that with you, you know, so in the future, you know, maybe you could, you know.
And I, I, I completely understand that, that aspect, but this is something that's been, I, I feel like has been, you, like I said, I grew up here, so I'm twenty-four years old, and this is something that's been the same since I have been a youth, since I have been young. And I, I honestly believe that things are being done, but my thing is, after so long, you, you, you almost can expect a kind of like an, a, a, an issue with the public of things not being progressed and moved forward.
And I'd be like, so as far as the library, you know that we are getting a new library built?
Fourteen million dollars.
I hear that.
But I'm not finished yet, did you know that we are, you said you went to the library and saw that there's a lot of outdated, a lot of things that need to be done, were you aware that we are in the process of getting an upscale new library built on Broadway?
That's awesome, that's awesome.
So this is what Mr. Counsel Coates was talking about, we have to be in the awareness of what's going on in our city, and as you were saying, it is really easy to say, but we're not done with you, and I believe that you are very sincere, and I do applaud you and your youth for taking the stance that you're standing, and I thank God for you, but I would like to see you, since you are really interested in, in, and in politics, if you would start coming to the meetings, you can go to the mayor's office to the mayor's secretary and get an agenda as to can all be, be lived and being held. We have our police commission meeting if you're interested and wanting to know what's going on with the police department. We have our public works department that Ms. Amanda Des was talking about with the trash and all the issues that we are having there. So these are meetings that you can come to to make you aware and the public speak to you or talk to you about things, and I'm aware of how the public can, can talk to you, because they're talking about a lot of things, and once I start explaining to them the how and the why, they begin to understand better. So if you were to start coming, attending the meetings, do you, do you work every day?
Uh, not currently.
Most meetings are held, most of our meetings are held at twelve noon except for our council meeting. So if you'll go by to get an agenda as to can the meetings are held, you know, we have many different meetings that you can attend, it helps you become aware of what's going on. And I, unlike you, I hate to see the empty buildings that are on, especially the East end of Broadway, but there's not, we're doing better than we can, but we can't make people occupy those old, outdated buildings.
Right, I understand.
So there are a lot of code issues that are involved. So I do applaud you for coming, you're very brave, and I thank you for that, but if you were to start attending the meetings to become aware, more aware of what is going on, and when you people talk to you, you can answer them with an informed request, because if you were to say to somebody, oh, we got an old broken down library, but then you can say, yeah, well, if you know that you're in the process of having a fourteen million dollar new library built with new equipment, new computers, new tech, and everything, you would have been able to tell them that.
Right.
So start coming, okay, dear.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hubbard came there, he wants to speak on citizen requests, but he didn't properly know how to sign it up, so I made sure to be getting it done. Also had a conversation with Mr. Hubbard outside of City Hall, and I'm trying to engage with him on trying to find out the different things that we galvanized about with the new, the new library. But I just want to carry you off, because you have a lot of young people you already that want to get involved, and you continue to come in and know that you're giving spirit, keep your head up and keep learning more of what I've said and have to offer, or whatever ideas that you may have, we're here to listen to the people of what's in front of you, so just make sure you stay involved. I mean, uh-
And we have community meetings all the time, announced in the paper, they're running on the City Channel, and pretty much in all of my planning can attest to this, I mean, the last meeting we had in area that you represent, how many people showed up?
We didn't have any.
Huh?
We didn't have any.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, so you understand what I'm saying, I mean, we've had four or five of them around the whole community, so that's what I'm saying, I mean, you know, you can't make people come out, you can't, you can't get them engaged.
And I believe it's, and I agree, it's, it's, it's a two, two-sided story to everything, it's a two-way street on everything, but at the same time, I, this is just a suggestion that I-
Very well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard. You guys have been very brave, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Starting on the agenda, we had a, Mr. Everett, are you here? Give your name, address, and normally five minutes.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Eric Everett, my address is one two oh three five Brotherly Green, T. E., Tennessee. I've come for the council today to talk about the shopping center that we manage at five hundred West Broadway. Currently, the West Memphis stores that's, that's currently occupied on the, on the extreme east end of the shopping center has, has done very well the past couple of years, and we're now fully occupied. We come for the council today to request an expansion, to allow us to expand into the space adjacent to it, which is approximately nine thousand square feet, for additional use of storage.
There's some quality to be engaged in, huh?
What's the request?
Are you making a request for some type of, uh?
It's, it's, yes, it's a, it's a request to special use.
That sounds to turn up through the design review or planning commission.
Is this a, a protest?
We table. We table.
Is it the, is it the dust in the back?
I think I was at that meeting that you had, excuse me, excuse me, I think I was at a meeting that you had, and I think the planning commission recommended that you get some pump tanks in the back, have you all done that yet?
Yes.
So the dust is on, it wasn't, it wasn't living in the back?
Yes, can I speak to that, just for, for a, a few minutes? The, the, the issue that we've had in the back of, of the, of the storage and also the dock that's behind the stage, has been, it's been a constant battle for us to keep- has been, it's been a constant battle for us to keep the water out for various reasons. Uh, the time that you mentioned, uh, Ms. Huxton, the ducts in the back, was this winter? At the time, the, the, the pipes were frozen. We had several days of cold weather. Pipes were frozen. We weren't, weren't able to fix that. We've had other problems with the pumps. We've had people steal the pumps. We've had people turn the power off to the pumps. We've had, uh, the power to the, uh, to the pumps being stolen, the copper. Uh, so, what I'm here to say to the council today is that, could we have done better with those situations? Yes. I, I, I completely agree, and I told the planning commission the same thing. It's our intent for that not to occur again. We've in- installed new pumps and a lock on the systems where it cannot be taken, the pump, you know, the, uh, pump cannot be turned off. We've also told our manager there at the West Memphis Stores that if they ever see water back there for a reason, something's wrong with the pump, to call us immediately. We've told them that before, and we, and sometimes they call, and sometimes they haven't. But for various reasons, there's been problems with the pumps, and my commitment to the council today is that we're going to do better with that situation. Just as you don't want that situation, and the citizens don't want this situation, we don't want that situation either. And I do believe we've, we've, we've done the steps, to taken the steps to, to make sure that that doesn't happen again.
Ms. Hubbard, you did say that the issue with the, uh, that I, that I was speaking about, what did you say you all took care of?
We took care of the, we, we've taken care of it several times. It's gone back and forth. Uh, the, when, when we had the cold weather back in the winter, the pipes froze, the, the whole, the, the, the pipe froze, and was not able to have a available pump. Uh, then we had a situation where a frog got caught into the, into the pipe. Then we had a situation where someone was turning on the pump. So there's been several situations. I remember, I, I remember seeing ducts back there, uh, in the winter, when, when it, it, it was, uh, we had several days of cold weather, and you started to thaw out. That's when I remember. I'm not sure the exact date that you're referencing, uh, but that's when I remember.
I have eight from the back, so I just wanted to make sure we were talking about the same.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the ducts, the same ones, the same duct.
Yes, that's it. That time, can I speak to that instance?
I just wanted to make sure I understood you.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I, I think you have a limit. I'm done. I just wanted to make sure we were talking about the same duct.
What is this nine thousand square feet? Is that the parking lot to the east side of you?
Uh, no, it's actually existing retail space.
Okay.
It's exactly existing retail space, uh, that's now occupied, occupied by Reed's Own Square. Re- Reed has agreed, we, uh, went to her, and has agreed to, uh, for us to allow her to relocate her to a different, uh, space in the shopping center. So we won't lose that, but we will just expand into that nine thousand square feet.
I think so. Well, that's right. If, if it's the same thing I'm thinking of, it was tabled indefinitely, and you just need to go back to the planning commission again. Uh, if that's where you were before, which I believe is where you were, right, with the commission?
Yeah, the, the, yeah, I think, if that's, if that's what you do, I'll do that.
I think that's what will have to happen before the council can approve any recommendation of the planning commission, like, whatever section.
Okay.
You might want to talk to him when you get out, you know.
Okay.
I think we've got two issues here. I think he's got a new construction that needs to go to the planning commission, and he's got, uh, some repair work that they will need to be verified, that it's been corrected. That's, I think, and that's the reason it was voted down the last time, or tabled indefinitely, which is the same thing.
Yes, ma'am.
And there was a feeling that you might not have performed your promises on the repair work for the existing building. And that was because of the inspection that were done that indicated you had not completed the project.
Well, that, that, I'll, that, it's not that we never complete, not completed the project. Anything I've ever come to say that, that we were gonna do for the city, or if I said that we're gonna do something, we've done it. And that goes back for fifteen year, or ten years. And, uh, now, we've done those things, but we've had challenges to make, make it corrected and stay corrected. Uh, for instance, the pump was stolen in between the time that I went to the planning commission the first time, and then it came to vote. So, uh, I'm not making excuses. I'm just to say that when we, when I've come to the planning commission the first time and said that I was gonna fix it, we did fix it. Uh, and did what we said we were gonna do. And as I said in the beginning of my, uh, talk today, it's been very difficult to keep things corrected. Um, so, but we'll do, do, do the best we can.
Yeah, just get with Paul, and then, you know, he'll pretty much try to work it back.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we do, the ruling is that it takes a unanimous vote to let him be added to the agenda.
I make a motion, let me add him.
Uh, a second of the motion.
All in favor, but I oppose. I don't hear any negatives, so it's unanimous.
My name is Darrell Anthony. For you all who don't know me, I, I live at seven twenty-six Oklin Drive in Marion, Arkansas. Uh, my wife and I are up here today to inform the city council, if everybody is here. My wife and I, we have a nonprofit faith-based organization, uh, called POP, producing outstanding people. We have been operating here in Critten County for the past forty years. And what I want to let you all know, this coming up fall, we are campaigning for equality in Critten County. Uh, we all know, I heard Mr. Wayne Kroom said that we need change, and I think everybody is in agreement on that. And so this coming up fall, starting June the twenty-eighth, we will be creating a platform, uh, to connect and encourage dialogue between constituents, candidates, causes, organizations, and programs in order for constituents to make quality, informed decisions to promote quality and leadership and programming in Critten County. So I want to invite everybody out to get involved in this movement. Uh, our first one will be June the twenty-eighth. It's an informational meeting. Uh, I know the election timeframe has not started as far as when people can sign up, but we do have people that we are already aware of that are running for office. Uh, we, we, this is open for everybody that is running, no matter if you're running for city council, you're running for mayor, uh, you're running for coroner. We want to invite everybody out so we can inform the citizens here in Critten County on who you are, uh, your track record, and what your agenda is for the city. That way, in the fall time, people can make informed decisions. Uh, I know I heard Mr. Pu- uh, City Councilman Poyleum say that it's hard to get the people out, but I'm, I'm a firm believer that I don't see giants over the hill. I'm a firm believer that, uh, if we give it a hard try and a, and a hard attempt, that we can get people out. Uh, because I believe that everybody that's on our team has influence. And if you know anybody that has influence, they can grab other people because of their influence. So the first one is gonna be June the twenty-eighth, starting at six thirty P.M. at the Civic Center. Uh, and that is all. Y'all have any questions for me?
I do, I have one.
Yes.
Uh, would you please come out to the, uh, January third of the Critten County?
Yes, ma'am. I put that in my phone.
Thank you.
And did you know that you talk, just like your dad, when you do all, did you know you do?
Yeah.
I just. Okay, all right. Thank you. We, that is great information. Thank you for coming, let us know.
All right, thank you.
Ma'am, can I, can I add something?
Oh, okay.
I just wanna personally thank you.
Oh, okay.
I just wanna personally thank you, Frank, uh, City Attorney, as well as our police chief. I just want to keep this on our mind. We had another shooting last night. We've been having shootings the last few days, and the thing, particular thing about last night was, well, two days ago, actually, Councilman Monday's son was hit by another car. His car was hit because of the shooters were trying to get away. But last night, uh, a young man was on the porch, and whatever the situation was, they were shooting at him. But not only did he get hit, but his eighty-one-year-old.
Grandmother.
Grandmother got hit. It goes to show you what we coming to, and we're gonna have to make some drastic decisions and changes because for some way, we're gonna have to get this thing under control soon, because the shooting that's going on in West Memphis is very uncomfortable, but I believe and know that we can work together and the community. Let me stress this, the community has to get involved, because I think it's city government and our police department is doing everything possible they can do. But the community got to stand up and fight against the crime that's in our community.
Thank you, Michael. Anything else?
Yes.
An announcement.
Yes, ma'am.
Wait a minute.
I have an announcement.
You, you.
Uh, everybody, well, most of the people here know Michael Lamb. Michael Lamb's daughter was in a fatal accident on last Saturday. And I just want to send out my condolences and condolences from the council to the Lamb family. Michael's been a good employee for the utility for a lot of years. He's a good, good-hearted person, and I wanted to let his family know that we do care.
As well as the other young lady, uh, that was in the car, classmate, Ms. Mauden.
In the mission.
Her daughter was, uh, killed as well.
Yes.
So, uh, for both families, we, we definitely want to send our heartfelt sympathy to both those families.
And, uh, I got a community.
Michael's an employee of the Water Department.
Say what, ma'am?
I said he's an employee of the Water Department.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes. Uh, our community meeting, we're gonna have one on the sixteenth at Pilgrim Rest Church at ten A.M. That's gonna be on a Saturday morning when you get back from the municipal league. That Saturday morning, we, we're gonna have a meeting at the, uh, Pilgrim Rest Missionary Baptist Church at ten o'clock.
Also Tuesday, uh, the day before the municipal league at Second St. John.
All right, thank you.
Any other announcements?
Yes, sir. I, I wanted to remind people of the Relay for Life is this Saturday at Tilden Rogers Park from four to eleven P.M. Come out and help Critten, uh, County fight cancer. So, I want to recognize Ms. Rhonda Standridge that works in Public Works. She's been leading this in a number of years. So come out and support the Relay for Life. Thank you.
And I want to say one quick thing before we leave. All the veterans that are actually on the council and that are actually sitting in the audience, you don't have to wonder anymore. Do you put your hand over your heart when you're doing the pledge of allegiance and the national anthem? You can announce it per executive order from the president.
Okay.
So you can announce it, so you won't be confused anymore.
Anything else?
Make a motion, adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, but I oppose.